And I just, I found out that New Zealand is a nuclear-free zone. And I found it interesting too as well. I was in Victoria last month in the hospital. And what happened is I noticed there was a lot of people from the Ukraine and Eastern Europe. And then finding out that Victoria, the city of Victoria is a nuclear-free zone. I said, I wonder if that also, if that influenced your decision to also come to Victoria over other cities? So it's all, it's all that questions, but also too as well, why do we need due diligence today? Because we're dealing with also now, we have, we're on the tip of a major world war. And what's at the forefront is nuclear threats. But yet we're talking about expanding nuclear, even with these SMRs, the small modular nuclear reactors. We're dealing with inflation. How much would remediation cost because of inflation? We have an aging population. Will we have enough workers to carry out remediation? So and also too as well, we have declining fertility. Low-level radiation even impacts male and female fertility. So what about our brightest and youngest researchers that Chalk River wants to recruit? Will they be, will they be supported? So again, and then we have rising debt, the pandemic and climate change emergencies. And we just had major forest fires. Is Chalk River also? If you have an uncontrolled forest fire, we have earthquakes here. And how, and they assure us that it's totally safe. But again, too as well, it's all these questions. And that's what consultation is all about. I think we need to have everyone in the circle also who brought up issues of consultation. And why we used a dream catcher in our method of assessment is that everything is interconnected. So I say migwech, but I think too as well, because of the change in population. And the Ottawa River not only also connects to Montreal, Canada's two major urban areas. We, is it time to phase out Chalk River because of that? And so here we are. So I say migwech, everybody.
Bonjour tout le monde. Good morning, everyone. We're going to start in one minute. On commencera dans une minute. Merci. Good morning once again, everyone. Bonjour tout le monde. Bienvenue. I would like to call the meeting to order and for those who are able, please rise for a moment of personal reflection. Merci. Thank you. As we begin our meeting today and on behalf of Ottawa City Council, I wish to acknowledge that Ottawa is built on unceded Anishnaabe-Algonquin territory. The peoples of the Anishnaabe-Algonquin Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The city of Ottawa honors the peoples and land of the Anishnaabe-Algonquin Nation and honors all First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. I'll also note that today is the day of the national flag for Ukraine. And earlier this morning, Principe Alplante and I were at a ceremony where we raised the Ukrainian flag at City Hall. I will now ask the deputy city clerk to do the roll call, please.
Councillor Luloff. Councillor Dudas. Councillor Hill.
President.
Councillor Currie, here. Councillor Kelly.
President.
Councillor Gower.
Ici.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
President.
Councillor Johnson.
Here.
Councillor Devine.
Here.
Councillor Bradley.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
President.
Principe Alplante.
Ici.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor Troster.
Here.
Councillor Leeper.
Good morning.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor Kits.
Here.
Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
Here.
Councillor DeRoche.
Here.
Councillur Hubley. Councillor Lowe. Mayor Sackliff.
Here.
Le Coran était à Monsieur le maire.
Merci. Confirmation of the man.
Quorum has been reached, Mr. Mayor.
On July the 12th. Are those carried? Are there any declarations of interest? All right. I'll note the communications in items seven and eight. We did receive regrets from councillors Lowe and Luloff today. Motion to introduce reports, councillor Gower.
That the report from Planning and Housing Committee Report 13 and the reports from the city clerk entitled Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending August 18, 2023, and Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of July 12, 2023 be received and considered.
Is that carried? Item 11 is the Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending August 18, 2023. From the city clerk's office, is that received? Item 12.1 is a motion regarding Rocklift Park Heritage Conservation District from the Planning and Housing Committee report. Is that carried? Item 12.2 is an official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment for 263 Rochester Street and 27 Balsam Street. Is that carried? Item 12.3 is the zoning bylaw amendment for 1081 Carling Avenue, and there is a motion to refer that report back to Planning and Housing Committee. Councillor Leeper, would you like to introduce that now?
Thank you very much. I think members are aware of the procedural issue associated with that file. So I'm moving, seconded by councillor Gower, whereas the recommendations contained in Report ACS-PREPS were recommended for approval by Planning and Housing Committee as modified by a motion that introduced a holding symbol on August 16, 2023, and whereas the Planning and Housing Committee served as the statutory public meeting for the zoning bylaw amendment concerning 1081 Carling Avenue, and whereas proper notification of the committee meeting was not carried out in accordance with the Planning Act, therefore be it resolved that the item be referred back to the September 20, 2023 Planning and Housing Committee, and be it further resolved that a new notice and revised copy of the staff report will be issued in accordance with the Planning Act.
Thank you, councillor Leeper. That's seconded by councillor Gower. Is that carried? Thank you, everyone. Item 12.4 is a zoning bylaw amendment.
Mayor. Sorry, just on this item, now that it's passed, I have either a direction to staff or an inquiry related to this subject matter. And I'm seeking your direction on whether we deal with it now, since we've just dealt with 1081 Carling, or wait till we get to another point in the agenda.
Let's, if you don't mind, let's get through the other items first and then we'll come back to it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I'll note that. Thank you. All right. Item 12.4 is a zoning bylaw amendment for 249 and 255 Richmond Road and 372 Tweedsmere Avenue. Is that carried? And then item 12.5 is the Future Neighborhoods Urban Expansion Area Process. Is that received? Item 13 is the Bulk Consent Agenda. Is the Bulk Consent Agenda carried? All right. We are now moving to in-camera items in a report from the city manager hiring panel. And before council resolves in closed session, on behalf of the panel, I would like to rise and report an open session at the end of the closed session deliberations of the hiring panel. In accordance with the procedure bylaw and the motion approved at the beginning of the hiring panel meeting of May 12, 2023, the hiring panel met in closed session with the assistance of an external search firm and a representative from the office of the city clerk on May 12, May 19, June 28, August 15 and August 22, for the purposes of the formal confidential hiring process for the new city manager, including multiple rounds of interviews of candidates and identifying a recommended candidate to be brought forward for council's consideration. No motions were carried by the hiring panel during its closed session deliberations other than procedural motions or directions to staff. The meeting of the hiring panel is now adjourned, and I will now call upon councillor Gower to move the motion for council to resolve in camera.
Be it resolved that city council resolve in camera pursuant to the procedure bylaw 2022-410 subsections 13.1b Personal Matters About An Identifiable Individual, Including Staff, 13.1d Labor Relations or Employee Negotiations, and 13.1f The Receiving of Advice That Is Subject to Solicitor Client Privilege, Including Communications Necessary for That Purpose, Client Privilege, Including Communications Necessary for That Purpose, in order to consider the verbal report from the chair of the hiring panel for the city manager, and specifically to consider the recommended candidate for the position of city manager.
Is that carried? All right. We will move in camera. Thank you, everyone. We will take a. All right, we will move in camera. Thank you, everyone. We will take a
Alright, everybody. We are gonna start in one minute. We're gonna start in one minute, please. Thank you. Alright, let's resume. We're gonna start again, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna call the meeting to order again, please. Attention, everyone. I'm calling the meeting to order again, please. Why is there not a gavel? Why is there not? Okay. Okay. For the benefit of the public joining us, Ottawa City Council just met in camera pursuant to the Procedures bylaw. Bylaw number 2022-410, subsections 13.1b, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including staff; 13.1d, labor relations or employee negotiations; and 13.1f, the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Council received an update on the city manager hiring panel process and the hiring panel's recommended candidate for the position of city manager. During the closed session, no votes were taken other than procedural motions and/or directions to staff. So we have a motion from councillor Kit, seconded by councillor Tierney. Councillor Kit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas on December 21st, 2022, in accordance with statutory provisions under the Municipal Act 2001, as amended by Bill 3, the Strong Mayors Building Homes Act 2022, the mayor delegated power to Ottawa City Council for the purposes of recruiting and hiring a city manager pursuant to the process set out in mayoral decision number 2022-05, which was later revoked and replaced by mayoral decision number 2023-11 dated April 21st, 2023. And whereas the recruitment and hiring process set out in mayoral decision number 2023-11 includes as follows, the establishment of the city manager hiring panel that has various responsibilities, including to evaluate the candidates for the city manager, to report back to council with a recommended candidate for council's approval, and to recommend the terms of an employment contract with the approved candidate for execution by the mayor, and that the City of Ottawa Statutory Officer Recruitment, Appointment and Contract Administration Policy and Procedures applies to the recruitment and hiring process with necessary modifications to reflect the process set out in the mayoral decision. And whereas the Statutory Officer Recruitment, Appointment and Contract Administration Procedures state with respect to the appointment of a city manager that any appointment approved by council shall be made public, shall be made by public resolution specifying the terms and conditions of such appointment. And whereas over the course of its meetings on May 12th, May 19th, June 28th, August 15th, and August 22, 2023, the city manager hiring panel reviewed a candidate long list consisting of ten candidates, interviewed six candidates, and shortlisted three candidates for further assessment. And therefore, be it resolved that in accordance with the city manager recruitment and hiring process set out in mayoral decision number 2023-11, and based on the recommendation from the city manager hiring panel, city council appoint Wendy Stephenson to be the new city manager for the city of Ottawa. And be it further resolved that city council request the mayor in consultation with the city solicitor and the director of human resources execute an employment contract with the approved candidate based on the following terms as recommended by the city manager hiring panel: a five-year term beginning on September first, two thousand twenty-three, and expiring on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight; a salary within the city manager pay band that has a maximum of three hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety cents, two thousand twenty-two rates, to be adjusted in accordance with any economic increases provided to the management and professional exempt group with annual adjustments done in accordance with the statutory officer recruitment, appointment, and contract administration policy and procedures, and pension insured benefits and other benefit prerequisites in keeping with those provided to executive-level members of the MPE group. And be it further resolved that council request the mayor advise council of the execution of the employment contract by way of memorandum.
Thank you, councillor Kit, seconded by councillor Tierney. Is the motion carried? Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations to our new city manager. Pardon? Okay. Moving to number fifteen on the agenda, motion to adopt reports. Councillor Gower.
That the report from Planning and Housing Committee Report thirteen and the reports from the city clerk entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, be received and adopted as amended.
Is that carried? Item sixteen, motions of notice of which notice has previously been given. Item sixteen point one is the motion by Conseil of Plant, and I understand there is a motion to defer on that. Is that right? Conseil of Plant.
I'll just read that therefore be it resolved, essentially what happened was I there was some incorrect information and therefore be resolved that council defer consideration of the motion item sixteen point one to City Council Meeting September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, which is my son's birthday. Thank you.
Okay, is the motion carried? Thank you. Item sixteen point two is the motion from councillor Dudas on the vacant unit tax. There is also a replacement motion from councillor Gower. So what I will suggest is that we will reintroduce councillor Dudas's motion, and councillor Dudas, who's joining us virtually, can speak to that. Councillor Gower can then introduce the replacement motion and speak to that. We will have discussion and questions on both, and then we will vote. And following procedure, we will vote first on the replacement motion. And if the replacement motion carries, there will not be a vote on the original motion. If the replacement motion fails, there will be a vote on the original motion by councillor Dudas. Is everybody clear on the process? Alright. Councillor Dudas, you can reintroduce your motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to confirm though, will this also count for my time for wrap-up and speaking to my motion? Because I can do both at the same time, or I can take both separately.
You can wrap up at the end if you like.
Okay, so if I can have the motion on the screen. And I will advise, my connection is incredibly poor, so if you can't hear me, just let me know. Okay, so what I will do is I know that I read right out the last time. I will read that therefore be resolved. Okay, therefore be resolved that the vacant unit tax by law number two thousand twenty-two one hundred and thirty-five be rescinded effective January first, two thousand twenty-four, and no VUT be applied to properties for the two thousand twenty-three tax year.
Okay, did you want to speak further to that now, or just wait until later?
What I would suggest is I'm happy to, if I could start off my five minutes, and then we'll let the conversation flow, because I think it's pertinent to the discussion and where I wanted to go with this motion. Does that work for you, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so I missed the first part of what you said. You're you're gonna speak now?
So why don't I speak now?
Yeah, please. Yeah, I was expecting you to, so please go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. So the last term at council, when we first considered the VUT, we were told about how it would target property speculators or foreign investors, and how it would help to force those who are wantonly sitting on empty properties to sell and to help tackle Ottawa's housing crisis. My motion today is not meant to be a referendum on the VUT, but rather acknowledging that something has gone very wrong in the administration and not allowing the status quo of the administration to continue. For many residents, they live in a single house or condo, they logged in, they checked a box, it was super simple. My motion is about all the others. As you can imagine, I have now heard from many Ottawa residents on the VUT. I have heard from rural property owners with houses that are long abandoned but are heritage protected. So those owners are caught in a catch-22. They can't tear it down, but they can't rent it, but they still have to pay the tax. Seniors who cannot live alone during Ottawa's winters, but unlike snowbirds, they get an exemption. They move in with family locally or temporarily move into an assisted living facility. They're subject to the tax. After they speak to the city, these owners have to pay the tax. Is this what we want? When the VUT was first presented to council, staff spoke of the property speculators or foreign investors that the tax would target. We were told the exemptions that would protect seniors, if they were in care or hospital, that they would be protected. But that hasn't happened. This has failed. Move into a hospital, you're exempt. Move into your child's house, you're charged the VAT. And we're talking about seniors paying nearly double their yearly tax bill. Ottawa has a housing crisis, and all tools at our disposal need to be explored. We didn't know the specific numbers, but on a leap of faith, we passed the program believing that the quote-unquote "bad guy" would be the target. We have all heard from residents who have never, were never intended to pay this tax, but because other specific situations have been caught up in this net and have to. City staff did not have concrete numbers in that report. They were very upfront that they only knew Vancouver numbers. The city in Canada widely acknowledged as the worst investor-held empty units. Staff didn't know that what our numbers would be, but they knew that we would be below Vancouver. With that in mind, city staff cut and pasted Vancouver's tax administration. Why reinvent a wheel that seemed to work, right? We now have preliminary numbers in front of us, and depending on the success of the appeals, we are over double, triple those numbers. These numbers are not proof of Ottawa secretly having a ghost vacancy problem. It is only proof that residents are being charged the tax in a far greater number than anyone could have ever imagined. And we know that those being caught up and legitimately subject to our tax go well beyond who we on council believed would be. Council can wait for the final report on year one, and maybe it will explain the discrepancy and even provide suggested changes to tighten the rules. But if we wait until two thousand twenty-four, the status quo administration will continue, and the VUT will be charged again next year. And we'll be very likely too late to stop it from being charged again in two thousand twenty-five. This means that literally millions of dollars will be unfairly collected from Ottawa residents in the interim. We have the preliminary data from staff. Rather than question if the tax has been overapplied, we will put our heads in the sand and believe that those government departments at all three levels, those who set housing policy were wrong. All the academics that study housing in Canada are wrong. And even the housing industry, those whose livelihoods and businesses are based on knowing the industry, surprise, you're wrong too. The message to council is simple: ignore what we told you before, trust us now. Vancouver, the city that has had severe empty unit problems, that they created the tax, the one that we copied, is actually normal. I am sure that they would be surprised too to see our numbers, so maybe I'm wrong. Maybe Ottawa is on par with Vancouver, or maybe all those experts, academics, and those in the industry are wrong too. But is it really easier to believe that our tax administration is broken? And think about that, because if we are wrong, it is Ottawa residents that will literally be paying millions of dollars for our mistake. The VUT can be an amazing tool to help tackle our housing crisis, but something was wrong. I'll just, I have three more words. Something has gone wrong, and whatever happens today, the status quo cannot be allowed to continue in Ottawa. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dudas. I'll now ask councillor Gower to introduce the replacement motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is seconded by Mayor Suckler. Whereas on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, council approved adopting the vacant unit tax program beginning on January first, two thousand twenty-three, which included direction of the deputy city treasurer, Revenue Services to apply to the provincial minister of finance, requesting that Ottawa be designated as an eligible municipality to levy a residential vacant unit tax in accordance with section three thirty-eight point one of the Municipal Act two thousand one. And whereas the provincial minister of finance subsequently designated the City of Ottawa by way of Ontario Regulation four fifty-eight slash twenty-two as an eligible municipality to implement a residential vacant unit tax bylaw. And whereas the net revenue from the VUT will be directed towards affordable housing initiatives as outlined in the Housing Services Long Range Financial Plan. And whereas the financial impact of a VUT incentivizes owners to return vacant properties to the housing market or to redevelop properties to help improve the housing rental supply. And whereas during the first year of the VUT, additional benefits have been realized such as the updating of outdated property assessment information, updated contact information for property owners, and a threefold increase in enrollment in the paperless billing through MyService Ottawa. And whereas in the vacant unit tax report approved by council in two thousand twenty-two, the document establishing the vacant unit tax in Ottawa stated that staff, until the program begins and the first annual declaration is in, the city will not have concrete data on how many vacant properties are subject to the residential vacant unit tax. Staff have, however, attempted to estimate the number of properties that would be vacant using various approaches and data sources. These approaches all suggest that the number of vacant properties in Ottawa subject to the residential vacant unit tax will be between zero point five percent and zero point seven five percent of the three hundred thirty thousand eligible units. In Vancouver, one percent of the eligible properties are subject to the tax. Toronto expects the tax to apply to one percent of their units. Using Vancouver's results as a proxy for measurement, staff adjusted the results for multiple factors such as the balance between condo apartment units and single dwellings. And whereas staff noted in the report that they had no concrete data on vacancy in Ottawa and estimated a vacancy rate of zero point five percent and zero point seven five percent. And whereas the preliminary vacancy rate is one point eight percent, but that vacancy rate will fluctuate until the appeal and audit phase is complete. And whereas the preliminary vacancy rate for Vancouver, the city in which Ottawa's VUT is based on, was one point eight percent as well, and their final vacancy rate after the appeal and audit phase was one point two percent. And whereas the preliminary vacancy rate for Toronto was six point one percent, mainly attributable to a declaration rate of ninety-five percent compared to ninety-nine point one percent for Ottawa. And whereas Ottawa had the highest percentage of declarations received and the lowest operating costs for a VUT in Canada. And whereas some residents have raised concerns about the declaration process, including the requirement to report annually and that declarations are required to be made primarily online. And whereas the development industry representatives have been seeking clarification on the application of the VUT to new builds and the impact on housing affordability. And whereas two to three years of data would be required to analyze trends and the possibility of moving towards an effective targeted or periodic declaration approach, therefore be it resolved that the vacant unit tax continue to be administered and staff be directed to improve and further simplify the declaration process, increase access by allowing declarations to be completed at client service centers, open the declaration portal earlier in December with notices to declare going out in January, leverage phone number and email data obtained in the first year to improve customer servicing and reduce the volume of late declarations in subsequent years. Be it further resolved that following one more year of vacancy data from the VUT program, staff consider a reduction in the frequency of the declaration and look at other ways to streamline targeted or periodic declaration and report back to council by the end of Q three, two thousand twenty-four. And be it further resolved that section three of the vacant unit tax bylaw two thousand twenty-two dash one thirty-five be amended to exempt a newly built unit which is listed for sale and not sold in the reference year of vacancy from the VUT in the first year that the unit is added to the property tax roll, such amendment to take force and effect on January first, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you for listening to all of that. I think you all know I've been a supporter of vacant unit tax since it came in front of council last year. I do think it's a very important and significant policy to address the housing crisis and also an important funding tool. I think it's too early to fully declare it a success or a failure. It will take two or three years of data to understand what effect it's having in putting more homes back on the market and making sure they're occupied. But I think we have had some good feedback from the public and from staff and from councillors on administrative changes that can be made to improve the process in future years. And that's really what this motion is aimed at, taking the opportunity now to direct staff and provide some recommendations on how that process can be improved. I may have some additional questions and comments on wrap-up, but I'll stop there for now and listen to the conversation from colleagues. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gower. Councillor Kelly.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I'd like to thank councillor Dudas for bringing this forward and forcing this conversation to happen today. I've had quite a few residents who I think have been unfairly caught up in the implementation of this program, and I'll get into that in a few details in a moment, but I have a few questions first. When the program was first proposed, what was the stated goal? Was it to raise money, or was it to incentivize owners of vacant units to put those units on the market?
Mr. Mayor, so we presented the framework in terms of the foundations of this program. It was two-fold. One was to get, ultimately, the goal was to get more units back onto the market. Obviously, we knew that there would be a financial impact to that, and then that fund was also going to be dedicated and is dedicated to affordable housing. So the goal was really to support the affordable housing prices that were faced with there in the city.
Thank you. And when the tax was first proposed, there were several different estimates, and I appreciate your time this morning and explaining, and you as well, Ms. Stephenson, for helping me understand how that came to be. But the number that was arrived at was sixteen hundred around there, if I'm not mistaken. And the results that we've gotten back this year are much higher than that. Would you account, how would you account for that? Is that, do you think it's because of the negative billing option that many of these homes have been deemed vacant when in fact they're not?
Mr. Mayor, I think what I would deem from that is, we had no real baseline data point. So when you go into, you know, an area where you have no data, there was no data collected, there was no reference point other than leveraging what we found was the best-in-practice in this area, which was Vancouver's model. So if you go through where we are in our stage, so we're in the appeal stage, and we're basically trending and tracking right where Vancouver was at their stage. They're more advanced than us, so their final is at one point two percent. And as this motion articulates and shows, you know, we're actually trending better than where Toronto was as well. So we're kind of right on par where the best industry standard is for this program.
Thank you. And out of the number of units that have been deemed vacant or declared vacant, do you have any ability to determine how many of those would be affordable? Or what you would call affordable in terms of families being able to attain that housing that's not on the market now?
Mr. Mayor, I would have to take that away and do some work with the team, because again, it all depends on the location, the market in that surrounding area where that vacant unit is, the condition of the unit. So there's a multitude of factors that would impact potential rent from a market perspective.
And the next question may not be for finance, might be for planning, I'm not sure. Where do the most affordable units in the city exist? Are they in high-rise apartment buildings? Are they in townhomes? Are they in single detached homes?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. In terms of affordability, it really varies. You know, I think we could, again, take that away, give you some feedback. But in terms of ownership, it's the entry point would be easier in a high-rise, but again, much smaller unit, not conducive to families typically.
And the VUT only applies to properties with six units or fewer, correct?
Mr. Mayor, no, that's not correct.
That's not correct?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, that was my understanding. My apologies.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor. You said six units or fewer?
Yes.
That is correct, so I missed it.
Okay. So since the VUT applies only to homes and buildings up to six units, what mechanisms does the city have in place to ensure that units in larger buildings are being occupied?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take that away and report back to you on that one.
Okay. And, you know, my final question is, how would you measure the success of this program? Will it be through seeing an increase in the number of previously empty but existing units? How are we going to be differentiating between new units on the market and new units as a result of the vacant unit tax?
Mr. Mayor, I think the key to measuring success is data. And that's where we're, you know, we're trying to get that data. We're seeing a lot of benefit of the data that we've been able to collect to date, and that's why we need a bit more time to go through a full cycle and see what trends And that's why we need a bit more time to go through a full cycle and see what trends will come. You know, making predictive trend assumptions with limited data. Is probably not the best way forward. So success will be contingent on data and as we see that trend lines and analysis of that data going forward.
Thank you. So I've heard from, I I think in terms of. Issues that that my office has dealt with since since the beginning of the term, the the vacant unit tax has been. Either the number one issue or certainly in the top three and. And I've had a lot of visits from people who I wouldn't consider to be. You know, anti-tax per se, but but do have. I think legitimate concerns and experiences that they've been through as a result of this implementation. And I've I've sent a few examples on and and I'll just repeat them for for some of my colleagues here today. So I've got an eighty two year old retired resident. That was repairing a vacant unit in his triplex. Got diagnosed with cancer for the third time, wasn't able to complete the repair. In the in the amount of time and the result was him being issued a twenty two hundred additional tax bill. I've got a person with a dilapidated house that the city has designated heritage building and can't be demolished. The cost of repair is not economically feasible and cannot be inhabited as is. The result that person paid a thirty two hundred dollar additional tax. Person with a dilapidated house with all services cut off over the last twelve years. And the owners are waiting to retire and build a new house on that property. They were issued an additional ten thousand dollar tax bill. And a person wanting to get a demolition permit but couldn't because the city wouldn't issue one without a corresponding building permit. The result was an additional six thousand dollars in taxes. I think it's my belief that there are perhaps an infinite number of reasons. Why an owner may leave a dwelling empty for more than a hundred and eighty four days in a year, which I don't really believe is any of our business. And burdening all property owners with this declaration in an attempt to incentivize a very small number of property owners to rent that space. Is not appropriate. So I will be supporting councillor Dudas's motion today. If I get the chance and will not be supporting the replacement motion. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor Troster.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to talk a little bit about what we see in my inbox every day in my ward. I represent the ward with the highest rate of poverty. The highest number of people living in very inadequate rooming houses and recently one of our residents died squatting in abandoned property. Heat exposure fever, really unacceptable conditions. And this was a resident that we had been trying to help. So what we have downtown is we have a number of vacant properties where the landlords are happy to speculate. To sit on in them. Some of them are heritage properties. That literally go to rot. And they are empty. When they could be housing people. Now I know it's not always a direct line. As far as I'm concerned, the V U T is a very small incentive, but it is some incentive. For. Property owners to. Ensure that people are living in their properties and not sitting empty. It is a real problem in our downtown core. Let's not forget this is ten million dollars in revenue toward affordable housing that is absolutely desperately needed. And the majority of the messages that I hear from residents are that they are desperate either to stay in their housing. Or to find housing. So. I do think it's problematic if people are getting caught into an administrative web. I do support councillor Gower's replacement motion because I I think improving our processes. Is always a good idea. But I do think, you know, fool me once. I do think residents who may have been. You know, who did not fill out the declaration and were charged will certainly do so now if they are living in those residences. And we had ninety five percent of declarations made online. It's improved enrollment for paperless billing in my service Ottawa. I think we can always improve our processes. But I think giving up on this tax after one year would be a huge mistake. And you know, I I just I find it incredibly troubling, the idea that we would abandon this so quickly. When it is clearly one of the very few revenue tools that we have available to fund affordable housing in our city. We've already lost so much to development, so much in terms of development fees with Bill twenty three. And I know there's not a great appetite to have a general tax levy for affordable housing, although that is something I would certainly support. So what this is is a relatively small penalty to incentivize landowners, property owners. To house people in empty buildings and that is what we need in our city. So I will not be supporting councillor Dudas's motion. I do think that councillor Gower's motion is quite reasonable and I'm very happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Troster. Councillor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Last time I checked, the priority of this council is to end the homelessness crisis. Which we all recognize requires multifaceted solution. It's not one size fits all. There is no question that we need more affordable housing. As the Chair of Ottawa Community Housing, I know it. As much as everyone else. This is why council supported. The vacant unit tax in the first place. And I heard from residents complain to me, why are houses left empty on my street? When we're in a housing crisis? This was a concern. And I agreed with them. According to staff, the projected revenue from the V U T will be thirteen million. The program costs two point five million. To run, leaving us with ten point five million for affordable housing, much needed. The twenty twenty three affordable housing budget from the city was fifteen million. The V U T will add to our budget. Why would we detract from it? The V U T is also brought many residents back into the market. The housing market with a vacant rate of one point eight percent. We need every unit we can get and more funds to build. The onerous. Of filing a declaration has been used as an argument to cancel the V U T. But we know that ninety five percent of residents filed online without assistance. It took on average three minutes. Four percent of residents filed with the help of staff on the phone. One percent of residents filed on paper or in person or had a drop in. And we helped many of those because I have the highest number of seniors in the city and we heard from them. We heard about the concern of senior residents specifically and again, staff had shown us. How to help them out. Filing their declarations faster into a higher percentage. Staff have stated. That they have always tried to make it easier and will work, continue to work with us on this. Myself and my colleagues. Understand the housing crisis and we keep discussing the need for affordable housing. We need this very much. Every week at Planning and Housing Committee. We work towards getting more affordable housing stock. And we need that revenue. Why? Why on earth would we take this opportunity away? I want to thank my colleague councillor Gower for his replacement motion. And I hope to move forward. In bringing affordable housing to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Menard, I'm going to go to councillor Hubley next because he has a technical issue and couldn't put up his hand, but he advised me his hand was up. So. Councillor Hubley, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor and. I want to acknowledge first before I ask my questions, I want to. Express my appreciation to Cyril and Joseph and the folks that. Worked on this because like other councillors, I had a lot of questions from residents on this. And I know Joseph called many of them back personally. And I heard from residents after that they appreciated the information he gave them. I'll give an example, the the a lot of. Seniors in my ward had some trouble trying to do this themselves online and Joseph was able to share the phone number where staff would help them do it and. And it was quite simple for it to be the process to be done after that. So I I want to start off by saying I. I appreciate all the work of staff on this. At same hand, I want to acknowledge that this is an issue that we received, I think all of us. A huge amount of negative emails on that, you know, why are you going out to a hundred percent of your population? On this issue when you say upfront that it's only going to affect a few thousand. And that was a tough dilemma for all of us. And at the time that this was passed. We were and we still are in a housing crisis and I believe most of the people around the table that voted for this value added tax at the time. Agreed that it will help put at least a couple of thousand more units on the market. And so to councillor Gower's motion. I I share his his thoughts on that, that that was what we were trying to do with this. So at the time I had done, I think it was a direction or a motion that said, fine, let's do this tax. But we got to find a way that we don't have to go out to residents every single year. To have them update this because the majority of our residents are never going to tick the box that they have a vacant unit. So to that point, I'm going to start asking my questions here and one is. How many or why did we not ask residents to identify whether it was their principal residence or not? What was the thinking behind that?
Mister Mayor. Again, we really had to, we leveraged all of our benchmarking and details from the Vancouver model, which was the best in class and tends to be the best in class today. So we leveraged that model as our best. Starting point. And as this, as the Gower motion outlines and as staff is continuing to see working with each of you in your offices. That's our starting point. So we're, we are fully committed to improvements and change in that and evolving that to make that better and better. So I think that's the work that we're going to be taking away as we get the data. So the key point. That I want to stress today is the importance of the data to help us make sure we actually target better and move forward a better program as we evolve this.
Right, so. Because my thinking is if we identify that as a personal residence, then that's somebody we probably don't have to go back to. Maybe never at all, but at least not for several years. Whereas if it's a rental property, you probably do want to go back out a little more frequently. So I'd like you to take that under consideration if we decide to keep the tax. And I got to say upfront to my colleagues, I am very divided on this issue. Because of the discussion around it last year and and the help from staff. I I'm leaning towards the Gower motion. But because of all the negative feedback from residents and and what I've heard in the public, I'm also. Thankful that councillor Dudas brought her motion forward. On that question or my question on that for Cyril is. How soon before you're going to be able to tell us? With relatively certain certainty, how many actual vacant units did this process identify? So when will the majority of the appeals be resolved? Because a lot of that, I would think a cursory investigation is going to tell us that some of these ones identified right now is vacant or not.
Mister Mayor, so right now the the appeal process is open till September fifteenth. So we've committed to coming back in October with an update in terms of the data that we have at that point. We've also in sync timing, we've also started the audit process. So as a declaration. Is an appeal process and audit process. So we'll have better idea in terms of the appeals by after September fifteenth, report back in October. But then we need more time as we go through the audit process. So by as this motion outlines by Q three or two thousand and twenty four, we would have a better indication of an awesome picture. Of the results of the the appeals and the outcomes of the audit process.
Okay, so. If. If if the Gower motion, for example, goes forward today. How soon would we be able to stop going out to every single person? When will you have the confidence in your data? That we could say, okay, we don't have to check with everybody for. Four years, five years, whatever.
Mister Mayor, I would say the Q three two thousand and twenty four mark, that gives us the time to go through that. Audit cycle because that audit cycle is a pretty robust cycle. So for us to go through that phase, do analysis and really come back with a recommendation. Or improve his next steps from that point, that's where that would be.
And so maybe to the clerk, if I may, would that be considered reconsideration that these motions are dealt with today instead of us waiting till we get all that information in October? And then. If if another motion comes forward to. Very similar to Dudas's motion. After we get that data and find out half of them shouldn't be on that list and and there was all kinds of issues. Would that be considered reconsideration?
Mister Mayor, I don't want to. Reclude what council may or may not do on this matter or in the future. However, if there was a direction to staff to go and provide. Some resources or some information back to council at some point, I think that might be a safe venue for you.
Might be sorry, could you?
A safe venue. Okay. Meaning it would represent, just to clarify, meaning it would would represent new information and therefore would not be reconsideration. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's that's important. One of the things that I I just want to add this and then I I think I'll be done, Mister Mayor. One of the discussions under the official plan last go around. Across the city was on density.
I think you are at time, so just keep it quick, please.
Pardon me?
I think you are at time, so if you could just.
Okay, I'll say this very briefly then. One of the big discussions under the official plan was density. In my ward, and I'm sure some of the other councillors around the table. Residents really push back on more density. They don't want. Single family homes being converted to triplexes all down the street with no parking or transit available for those people. We're seeing the signs of that until the official plan was decided. We were seeing some really wild retrofits like. Twelve hundred square foot units, people coming in, putting eight bathrooms in there and expecting everybody to live without. Only with a small common kitchen, that kind of nightmare scenarios. So I that's one of the reasons why I I'm leaning towards the Gower motion. So thank you, Mister Mayor, for allowing me to vent.
Thank you, councillor Hubley. Councillor Menard.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think it's clear in Ottawa, we have people without houses and we have houses without people. And it's time that we do the math and and put two and two together. I think it's worth keeping in mind to the point about cost that whether we maintain the V U T. A fund that would fund more non-market housing development or not. We will nevertheless have to pay a price. In fact, we already do. The price of not building affordable housing is by far the dearest price and not just in terms of. Inhumane suffering that is homelessness in a winter city. But in terms of the actual tax burden as well. And I think we all know here. Putting it succinctly, paying to create a bed in a non-market housing unit will always be cheaper. For taxpayers than paying for a bed in a shelter, a hotel, a hospital or a prison. And we need to do what we can to make that investment through the V U T. Not making that investment will put upward pressure on taxes at every level of government. It puts us on a path that will both see us pay less overall and that better targets those that are most able to pay, those with multiple. Units in the city. That would be most able to pay for a priority that we've set as a council. I think, you know, this vacant unit funding is one of the only tools that a municipality has to deal with the issue of supercharged demand in the real estate market from speculators and others. And if you support. Supply side solutions. To the affordable housing crisis. But oppose the only measures we have to help to ensure that supply is meeting the actual demand for housing and oppose the only funding mechanism we have that is exclusively for affordable housing. Then you don't actually support solutions to the affordable housing crisis. I think. We in Ottawa, we had higher declarations. Than Vancouver and Toronto with ninety nine point one percent. I went on there. It was relatively easy to click that box and declare. That wasn't a huge burden on me. But the burden of homelessness, the burden of people that are precariously housed now, that's the real burden we should be trying to tackle. And this is one of the only tools. That we have to do that. At the end of the day, my priority is trying to end that form of human suffering with the limited tools we have. And so I hope that. You know. The people around this table that have advocated for affordable housing in the past, including, you know, chairs of of the committees that deal with affordable housing. Will will stick to that. And ensure that this tool remains and is something that targets those obviously most able to pay. While I think we can make changes to the program at the same time, I think. Things like a paper option, some clearer language language around the consequences of not filing some of the pieces in the Gower motion and in your motion. Speak to some of the changes that I think we can do to evolve the program and improve it. But that this was a good move of the last term of council. I'm proud to have supported it then and proud to support it now and I hope the rest of council can do the same. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Menard. Councillor Hill.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor. I really want, I want to get away from the conversation on the on the the process because I do agree that we can clean up process. This has been a pilot year. We could go through, we could identify. Better mechanisms and we're going to be in the process. I've heard that already. From staff on that in terms of of looking at, you know, making it a less burdensome issue as it goes forward. My concern more so is on the stated purpose and the process. And and really I think there could potentially be some unintended consequences that I want to speak to it just because I'm I'm quite concerned about where that could go. So from a stated purpose perspective, the Fedco report to council in June of twenty one. So from a stated purpose perspective, the Fedco report to council in June of 21 stated that the residential vacant unit tax will encourage homeowners to maintain, occupy or rent their properties, thereby increasing the housing supply. The tax will also reduce the number of property standards issues by motivating property owners to exercise their options to resolve the outstanding issues. This is a behavioral tax. The purpose behind this tax is to change a behavior. And I don't disagree that we want to reduce the total number of vacant units across the city of Ottawa. We have some mechanisms to do that. We do have a bylaw that would look at vacant units, that looks at dilapidated units. And there are mechanisms with which residents or city staff can go through to deal with that through the bylaw process. And I would also offer that there's a short-term rental process that we could be looking at, perhaps with a bit more squeeze on that if we're genuinely concerned about making residential units more accessible. The discussion about what we could do with those additional resources, I think is a secondary discussion. And I think first off, we need to talk about the purpose of this and what we're trying to get out of it before we talk about how we're going to divvy up the resources that come. I don't think there's any disagreement with more resources, we can do more good things with that. And I don't disagree with that, that comment. But my concern is, if we're going to be taxing folks, then we need to understand the implications of who we're taxing, why we're taxing them and what the second order effects are. We've heard earlier, a couple of case studies of a few folks in the city that were, you know, arguably taxed in a way that I don't think the intent was there, whether it be for, for a person that has had an inheritance, whether it be for somebody that had a heritage site that they wanted to demolish. I have examples of that as well. But I think the issue that I want to also bring out is, if we're saying that we as a city are looking out 10 years at growing our residential housing stock by about 151,000 units, I'm assuming that a good proportion of those, to be successful in this endeavor, are going to be rental units. Do we have data, I guess this is a question to staff, do we have data on how a vacant unit tax, which is an additional barrier to the, the entities that operate in the vacant, or in the rental market space, how they will be implicated over the next 10 years? Or if this could potentially have adverse effects to our intent to try and grow the rental market commodities within the city?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure I clearly understand the question, but I guess the intent again is, is to get more stock in the market. So in terms of data, that's what one of the fundamental framework goals is of this program, is to get more, more of those, more of those units back into the market. So I'm not entirely sure if, if you want to rephrase your question or be more specific.
No, for sure. I can, I can clarify and apologize if it wasn't in the first place. I understand that motivating an individual that, or, or corporation that has a vacant unit through taxing them will motivate them to do that. I'm talking about going forward over the next 10 years. If we're looking at developing additional housing stock and some of that will be rental unit, are there potentially actors in that space who would be disincentivized to investing in future growth of housing stock as a result of a potential barrier like the vacant unit tax?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll put my economic lens on that. I, I think fundamentally, developing, if you're going to develop more rental stocks in your market as a developer or as an investment opportunity, the goal would be to rent that unit. So I think it would not be an adverse effect. I think the goal would be to get more, more units in the market so you can leverage the rental market and maximize your investment through rentals.
So if in the future, we believe that, you know, that the actors that were, that the landlords would be incentivized to rent out units and not have them vacant, it probably makes sense that in the present, they want to do that as well. You know, so my, my concern there would be, you know, I, I acknowledge in 2019, 2020, we had a, we had a significant spike in the market as a result of low, uh, low interest rates, a lot of people purchasing, a lot of speculation. But I think as a part of the regular market cycle, we've seen that ease off. I don't disagree whatsoever that a corporation who's profit motivated is going to look to build housing stock where they think they can make a profit, whether it be through sales or through rentals. But if in the future, they're, they're going to be wanting to, 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 to house and to get occupants in them, it just makes sense that they would want to do it in the present as well. So in some ways, I think that the solution we have of the vacant unit tax is a solution in search of a problem because there are other mechanisms that we have here, such as the vacant unit bylaw. And perhaps if we strengthen that, or if we were to look at short-term rentals as well, which I know in my ward, I have a significant concern with. There are many residential areas where we have significant short-term rentals, which I think could potentially be better, better used elsewhere. So from that perspective, I'm supportive of the Dudas motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor De Bruz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for the time. I'm not going to repeat, be repetitive of some of my colleague's question and concern, but I have a quick question. Before I ask the question, I, I do also, because one of the councillors that I've been a regular to our city staff, especially in the financial department, Joseph and Cyril have been amazing, amazingly helping us. And most of the time, sometimes their hands are tied because there will be an issue with impact. And sometimes it depends on how the household has been coded or, and so many other things we discovered. But I want to thanks and I appreciate all the work. They were very responsive to our rural resident and our community because we have lots of issues in our area from a VUT and that we discovered that. And, but the burden was mostly on the residents to declare and to make sure that they prove that there was units are their own personal home, that they live on them or they're vacant. But my question is quick, probably to Cyril or Joe. Some of those units that were being deemed, declared that they're, they didn't declare their VUT and some of the appeal that we have, do we have an idea? Where are they from in the city, like mostly like we have rural or suburban? Do we, are we tracking those numbers to making sure to have a precise data?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we are tracking all of that. So that's one of the, the core benefits I see in this program is we are getting a lot of good data. We're tracking every component of the data points and those are the things that we're leveraging and we'll report back on when we report back in October, some of those metrics and those data points.
So councillor will have an opportunity to look at the database on, on, on Ward and which area were impacted. And most of this appeal that you're seeing right now, do you have lots of mostly vacant units in, in like farmland and, and homes are not be able to rebuild or to repurpose after people bought their home, they're buy a land and they have a farmland that's very hard for them to be able to repurpose and rent it?
Mr. Mayor, so at this point, I haven't got the team to dissect it all because it's a moving data point. So what, what we will commit to is, you know, when we report back, we'll have, you know, we'll report back all the metrics we want. If there's additional metrics or views that you want to see, we're more than willing to kind of dissect that data into different frame points you want to see.
Thank you, Cyril. I also, like some of those units that we've been in question, we have a single dwelling that someone obtained an application to put a granny suite on it. And now all of a sudden becomes secondary unit. And if the code were entered incorrectly at an impact, at the, at the impact at that time, now what happened is the resident that they sold that home to, to another new owner and the new owner decided that, you know what, I don't want, I, the previous owner built it for his mother or his kids or something. But now I decided it's my single dwelling. I know it's, I have a granny suite in it, but I don't want to rent it. Now he's forced to rent it and the onus right now is on the owner to go through the process. And I know, I know that you guys don't have that process because it's a secondary process. So to me is, are we going to be able to work with impact to making sure to be able to pass those processes? Because the resident still has to pay the taxes that we, we, we're going to implement on them from the VUT. And it's on him to follow the process between impact and us. Are we having some dialogue or can we have some easier process when we discover issues like that? And I know that your team is very engaged on those issues. So there is anything we can work and work with the, in that process?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I agree. We are, we are keeping track of all those different trend lines to different down point, data points in terms of trends and what the issues are. And we're here to provide that guidance and support to the residents for impact. And we're also having regular dialogue with impact as well. So we're here to support where we can, when we can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not a lack of service from our city staff. They've been amazing. They've been really responsive to our residents. But there's a lot of issue during the process that's happened from previous year. How the code has been entered and impacted. So it's putting a lot of onus on our resident. I'm one of the councillors that, I know that, I looked, I looked at the number. There's over 30,000 inquiry to council, to councillors' office, and city staff. And probably one of rural resident in the city of Ottawa that they don't have capability to re-renovate those old farm homes and some of those deficiency in, in the coding that's been implemented through impact. So I cannot support that VUT tax for multiple reasons. And I'm hoping that councillor Dudas' motion will be, will be brought to floor for us to be able to vote on it. So I appreciate it for that reason, Mr. Mayor, I can support that VUT. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor De Bruz. Councillor Carr?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to my colleagues for bringing these issues forward. I've missed you all over the past six weeks, so it's great to have such good discussion. I want to thank my colleagues for highlighting the housing crisis at the same time. As a councillor, I made my decision to give up my career in the federal public service, largely motivated by what happened in my ward with Heron Gate. And I've spent most of this week talking to the media about the fact that we have people living in community centers because we don't have enough houses. We're actually looking at, Clara and her team, they've done a fantastic job at looking at over 160 listings for office spaces, 53 industrial spaces to house people in. That's the state of our housing here in Ottawa. We're actually looking to put people in industrial spaces that don't have homes. So I was certainly intrigued reading that we have 6,000 vacant units. So I'll just give that as my personal viewpoint on the state of housing here in Ottawa. I just have a quick question for staff. Hearing my colleagues speak about all of this evidence today that this has all gone wrong, I was under the impression that data would not be available until 2024. I would just like to ask a few clarifying questions on this. So, so currently there's an appeal and audit process going on. So if somebody has been charged correctly, could you just give incorrectly, could you just walk me through a little bit about what that process might look like?
Mr. Mayor, yes, so right now, the, the appeal process is open and it closes on September 15. So we've had various communication throughout the process, providing that window of, of appeal process. So on a daily basis, I can tell that we get phone calls, we get in-person visits from individuals that are in that appeal process. At the same time, we do have two resources right now dedicated to the audit stream of the process as well. So, you know, some of that audit function is reviewing the appeals and some of the audit function is doing our random sampling as we go through all the other stuff that was declared, et cetera. So the, the appeal process closes September 15. We'll report back by the end of October to, to councillors in terms of that data point. And then in Q3 of 2024, we'll report back in terms of the outcome of the audit cycle. At that point in time, that's where we'll have that declaration, appeal, audit cycle kind of fully done with good data to report back on.
Okay, excellent. Would you be able to give me any idea about how many people are currently in the appeal process? Or how many appeals you've had, any, any figures that you could provide?
I think at the end of June, we're sitting around 1,900 appeals. I don't have the latest data as of now, but I can certainly report back with that.
Excellent. Okay, so 1,900 of these 6,000 units are currently under appeal. So come next fall, we will have proper data to inform ourselves of decisions.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, when we speak of proper data, that's one year of a good cycle of data, right? So again, there's, there's a, you know, the more longer you have a repeated cycle, you get better data. But at Q3 of 2024, we'll have a full year cycle in terms of going through the full year declaration, full year appeal, full year audit. And then if this motion is successful, second year of, of declaration. So we'll have better data for sure in Q3 of 2024.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. I just wanted to clarify because I think it's really important as elected representatives that we use valid data to inform our decisions. I don't think we should be making decisions based on anecdotes. So I'm happy to wait till 2024 and happy to support the Gower motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Carr. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm certainly willing to share a few thoughts on this matter. In River Ward, my residents are very mixed on this matter. We are absolutely in a housing and homelessness emergency. Almost every delegation that councillor Kitslow and I had with ministers in government this week or MPPs in opposition at the AMO conference, at some point, we discussed housing and homelessness, the ongoing challenges and the need for greater focus on being solutions oriented. Are we truly maximizing every single tool to address housing and homelessness? I don't think we are. Are we allocating sufficient resources in our own budget to address this matter? I don't think we are. Are we leveraging as many partnerships and resources from other levels of government or community partners to address this matter? I don't think we've, we've come close at all. Councillor Troster talked about 11. I think there's actually an argument to be made for a greater discussion on this matter. If this is truly one of our top priorities that we as a council said we need to focus on, given the impacts that we have, then we need to discuss this as part of our budget process. On principle, I have an issue with the state dictating how people use their homes. This is a significant, significant challenge for me. Does a government have the right to tell people how to use their homes? I think the VAT overs, the, the vacant unit tax oversteps what I consider to be reasonable. What's next? I have a four-bedroom home. Not all four bedrooms are used. Should I be taxed because I'm not using my bedrooms to their fully potential? In River Ward, we have two particular neighborhoods that were built right at the end of World War II with huge lots, lots of land. People are not building coach houses. Should they be taxed because they have unused land on their properties? What do I tell widows who have decided to stay in their homes for 50 years? They're living alone. Their homes are not fully utilized, rooms are not used. Should they be taxed because they're living alone in their home, which is their right to do? They can live there. That's their home. So we have a discussion about our budget every year. I don't see a lot of amendments to our budget to put more resources and allocations into housing and homelessness. We can do more. We can do more. We choose not to do that. Many, many priorities in this city. And when I see federal government officials in the news last night when I came home in Charlottetown saying, and they're quoted, "We're not going to see any significance to housing for at least three years across this country because of all the issues, high interest rates, the cost of construction, the challenges for construction materials." That's a very, very huge concern for me. So for all the reasons stated, I want to see people living in homes, not in shelters, not on the street, wraparound services. The question is, is the vacant unit tax the right way to get there? I have a huge issue in us telling people how to use their homes. I just think it's wrong to do that. And yet I take criticism because it looks like I'm anti, I'm not wanting to help solve this, this crisis that we have. And nothing could be further from the truth. So that's what I'm wrestling with. I certainly didn't run on creating a new tax. I think people who are running an election should disclose whether or not they're going to support a new tax and why. But we definitely need to move forward and we definitely need to find more resources to address this emergency which exists, which is a significant challenge in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Consigliere Plante?
Oui, merci beaucoup. So as also a resident with, a councillor with a huge housing homeless and shelter issue in her ward, I think we need all the tools in our toolbox to help solve this ongoing crisis that many cities are facing, whether that be the creation of an acquisition fund, whether that be a vacant unit tax, anything to get people into housing and have some dignity. That being said, I'd like to see if I can do a direction to staff. And I have an issue with Brownfields in my ward, as you know. And I was wondering if we could get a copy of the draft Brownfields report.
Mr. Mayor, happy to sit down and meet with you, councillor. The, the report, the Brownfields report is part of a larger, uh, single report on the CIP review. So it's not ready yet, but we can certainly discuss the, you know, the directions and what, what the results of our review have been to date.
So you'll take that direction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Merci, conseil plante. Councillor Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all my colleagues who brought forward motions on this today. I will be supporting the replacement motion. I hope that we can reaffirm council's support for this program. I have a quick clarification based on some of the discussion I heard today around granny suites. Perhaps. Perhaps we can just clarify here, is a granny suite in someone's home subject to the V U T with current regulations?
Mr. Mayor, the distinction is made by impact. So impact has a very variety of, sorry, a variety of codes where they kind of distinguish the different types of home. So they set that code. If there's confusion there, it's been misused. I think that's where we as staff are really where they're to support the resident and support them through that process to get that correct. So impact sets the code which defines whether it's a second dwelling in the house or not.
Great. Thank you for that answer. So I just, my other point is a little bit different than what my colleagues have been raising today. I just wanted to raise caution and just seek a bit of clarification around that therefore be it resolved in the replacement motion that seeks to consider reducing the frequency of reporting of the V U T. So I believe that the effect of effectiveness of this program is predicated on the fact that it is annual reporting. That cadence provides consistency to the public and it will become routine. I think that if we we move towards, you know, a biannual or every three years or every five years, as I heard one of my colleagues say, I think that people would be more inclined to forget. That will actually see a lower response rate, more late fines issued and likely more appeals. It could also be potentially more punitive. So let's say you didn't know that there was a vacant unit tax, two or three years go by, and then we retroactively provide them with a bill of two or three years of vacancy and that would be a huge bill. The intent of this program is also to return vacant units to the market. If we wait five years on reporting, that's five years that we've missed out on returning a unit to the market. So I think we need to consider that before reducing frequency of reporting. Obviously, the one benefit of this program is we get more funding for affordable housing from the capital side. Again, if we reduce the frequency of reporting, that money will be delayed in coming to the city. So I just want to raise that caution when that comes back next year. And I just want to seek clarification. So do staff interpret that clause that they must come back and recommend to council options for reducing the frequency? Or is there enough flexibility in that clause that if if that's problematic or it doesn't make sense, or it's going to reduce the effectiveness of this program? Do you have the flexibility to recommend no changes to this program based on this motion?
Mr. Mr. Mayor, yes. The way the motion is written, I think it gives that flexibility there for consideration.
Perfect. I appreciate that clarification. And as I mentioned, I will be supporting the replacement motion.
Thank you, councillor Bradley. Councillor Divine?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all of the the input from my colleagues here. So we tell people what to do with their their homes all the time. It's one of the unfortunate burdens of power of being an elected official is that we have to draw lines of what people can and cannot do. And oftentimes, that means drawing lines literally on their property, telling them what they can and cannot do with their driveway or their lawn, or whether or not they can operate a business. And it makes us very unpopular at times. I recognize that. My email inbox, as with all of ours, have been full of people expressing very strong and critical positions on this V U T. And I just want to thank and I want to acknowledge my colleague councillor Hubley for the honesty and transparency he demonstrated in his comments when he spoke to his experience in handling this debate. Most of us have already made a decision on where we're going to stand on this. I will be supporting the Gower motion because I believe that the amendments it seeks is to improve a program that is serving the public good. The housing crisis is by far our number one responsibility right now. And this is one tool that is proving to be irksome to many, but is absolutely serving the public good. And what I appreciate about councillor Hubley's comments is that whereas most of us are clearly on one side of the fence, councillor Hubley demonstrated that he is sitting on the fence and unsure. But what I appreciate about what he said was that rather than respond more to the critical emails that he and we all are getting, he's more willing to play out this experiment and see where it leads. And I just appreciate that transparency and willingness to bear the brunt of more criticism for the sake of seeing where this leads us in the anticipation that it will serve the public good to great to great product. So thank you, councillor Hubley. I will be supporting the Gower motion.
Thank you, councillor Divine. Councillor Dudas, you're next, but I'm assuming you're there to wrap up. So I'll go to councillor Leeper first, if that's all right?
Sure.
Yep, councillor Leeper?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I am a full-throated supporter of the vacant unit tax in Hintonburg. Community members have taken a look and figure out that as many as two percent of units are sitting vacant. And unfortunately, a lot of those units are units that were being used as affordable housing prior to being purchased by speculators who are able to use the machinations at the the board to evict tenants and then sit on the land until they're ready to start redeveloping it. And and that's a dynamic that is is unacceptable to the residents of Kitchessippi. The it is wildly, I think, premature to think about scrapping the vacant unit tax. We really don't understand what effect it's going to have in the marketplace. Not only would I hope that it puts units back into the market, but I hope that the existence of the vacant unit tax is actually serving as a disincentive to take take part or or engage in those kinds of speculative behaviors. Maybe knowing that there is a vacant unit tax in place might prevent that next small speculator from purchasing that next building full of tenants who are enjoying affordable housing and and reversing that situation. I do have one question, though. Residents who are concerned about the potential loss of the vacant unit tax have also expressed concern to me that a the replacement motion may reduce, wind up reducing the frequency of declaration. And I'm concerned about that, too. Is it open if residents in a community are concerned that a a building may be sitting vacant and should be subject to the vacant unit tax? Do they have to rely on random audit in order to ensure it's caught? Or is there another mechanism they can use to ensure that staff are taking a look to make sure that the vacant unit tax is applicable, that it's being applied?
Mr. Mayor, I guess the first the first step is the end, today, the annual declaration. So they're required to do the declaration. From there, as we go through the audit process, that's where our process will flush out those that are deemed to be compliant but are not compliant through our process. If you're specifically, if we extend the declaration to a biannual, three-year or five-year cycle, then obviously that risk is is wider because now you're not declaring in an annual cycle, you're declaring less frequently, but we would have to kind of reevaluate our audit function to see if we can kind of deter or flush down those those that fall into the noncompliant in those two, three-year windows, depending on the iterations or the cycle that we choose to go forward with, if that makes sense.
Is there a way for residents to request information from the citizens to see whether a vacant unit tax is being applied on a unit on a building that they see as vacant?
I would have to take that, Mr. Mayor, I would take that back to Joseph, my expert, who's not here today, but to get clarification on that one, but I'll follow up with you.
Yeah. So it is a concern of mine that even though that's not what we're doing today, we are sending staff away with direction if we pass the Gower motion to explore a reduced frequency. And I I'm not actually worried about the yearly frequency. The numbers that we saw with respect to successfully declaring are very high. They're above our municipal peers across the country. My office was not flooded with problems on on declaration. I've heard great things about staff's ability to help people through. I know that my staff have helped a few people through, but we were not flooded with requests. The declaration process turned out to be far easier than many of us would have anticipated when we first approved the vacant unit tax. So while I understand that there may be a political desire to reduce that frequency of declaration, I'm looking forward to delving into those numbers at the at the appropriate time because I am concerned that reducing the frequency of declaration will result in more property sitting uncaught for a longer time, unless there is some kind of a mechanism whereby residents can assure that the appropriate attention is being paid. So no, I think it's it's premature today. We don't know what effect this is having in the in the marketplace. It has not even been, what, nine months since the declarations were first opened? We need to give this some time. Let's have a different conversation next year, but let's give this vacant unit tax a chance to address the problems it's intended to address. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Leeper. So we'll go to councillor Dudas and councillor and then councillor Gower to wrap up. Councillor Dudas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually first have a question for staff about the replacement motion. And and I want to clarify, too, that, you know, from the very beginning, I I've been opposed to the tax, but it was always because I did not believe that the owner should be put on a residence to self-declare, whether it's a year or every couple of years. The fact is, is that we should have the tools in our toolbox in this day and age for the city to be able to identify those who are taking advantage of the system, foreign speculators, those who are sitting on properties, not turning them over for profit. We should be able to identify those and not catch everyone in the same net. And I have only been hearing from seniors and, you know, farmers and folks. I've been hearing from folks from across the city, not just my own ward, saying they are nervous that they're they're not ticking the box appropriately, so they did it anyways. They were late in their fee filing and they didn't have to pay the two hundred and fifty this year, but they will next year. We're going to hear about that, just sort of just prepared. But my my question is, I was happy to see in the replacement motion that there's going to be further looking into how to provide, you know, open, open abilities for people to do it online and things like that. I don't see a single thing in that motion that specifically exempts farmers or seniors. The last therefore be it resolved, though, the only thing I read into that is that it's going to exempt developers. So the last therefore be resolved specifically says that new properties, and I'm paraphrasing, so forgive me, but that new new properties, new units that open up for a year will be exempt. And the only people that I can think about that are opening up new properties, building properties, are people in the development community. So maybe I'm confused by that, and maybe staff can clarify. What is your interpretation? Because it will be you that interprets this replacement motion as to who actually benefits from that last therefore be resolved?
Mr. Mayor, if I look at the, I'll go one back to the be it further resolved. I think for me, my direction to Joseph and the team is is explore all things that kind of fall into that that stream. So I'm just, again, speculating here. It could be a scenario where you know, annual declarations might make sense for a certain stream, but there could be other data points like farmers farming units may not. So I think for us, as we go away, take this away and do this work, I think that's where we're going to come back with those creative opportunities to present back to council for consideration.
So I I appreciate that, Cyril, and I I want to just state, and then I'll finish, I'll hand it back over to councillor Gower. You know, from the very beginning of this, I said, find those exemptions. Make it so it's not on our residents. You know, if we're going to tax them, then we should be straight out honest about it. You know, the fact is, is that now it's a hidden, it's a hidden tax and they're on the hook for self-declarating every single year. And we're catching people who do not belong in this net. And Cyril, I appreciate the work that you and Joseph and team have done, and I know you were tasked to do this by council. However, the fact is, is that the administrative system is broken. It's failed and it's catching the wrong people and it's not myco-targeting those who are actually breaking the rules. And, you know, I I purposely wanted us to have this conversation before we we were too far down the path to be able to turn back. And I'm glad we're having this discussion today, and I think it's it's fulsome, especially those who are new to this term of council that didn't have the opportunity last year. I will not be supporting the replacement motion. I do look forward and I hope that those can I can seek support from my colleagues for voting on my motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dudas. Councillor Gower?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We've we've covered a lot here today. Ninety-nine point one percent of property owners completed a declaration. That's three hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred who made a declaration before the deadline. Three thousand people did not. That's an incredible, incredible rate of success for a year one of a program like this. There've been a couple of mentions about the burden on certain demographics, including seniors. My understanding from city staff is they have done some investigation and surveys into different demographic groups and how they responded their declaration rates. And I think it's important to point out seniors actually had a higher rate of declaration than the population on average. The benefits of this, again, ten point five million dollars projected in net revenues for affordable housing. We have seen properties return to market that have been vacant for years. We have seen demolition of derelict buildings. We don't know the quantity yet. We don't know how much of that can be attributed to vacant unit tax. I've seen some of those in my ward. And I expect as we continue this over the next two or three years, we'll have a better sense of the effect it's having. More people moving to paperless billing, some administrative help there, too. And an important one that hasn't come up today is data. We now have, for the first time, ward by ward, data about occupancy, tenants versus owners in all sorts of different housing types. Like, I've never seen a stat like that. I know for Stittsville, these are preliminary numbers, but about a third of all townhomes are rented. And overall, fifteen percent of homes in Stittsville are rented. That's really important data citywide as we start to develop other policies and and other initiatives to tackle our housing crisis. So a lot of benefits to this program. It's pretty rare that we develop a policy or program that has an immediate effect on policy goals. In this case, the most important priority for council, which is the housing crisis. So thank councillors for the discussion today, and I hope you'll support my motion. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gower, and thank you, everyone, for the healthy discussion on this. So we will vote first on the replacement motion. And I'll ask the deputy clerk to call the vote, please.
Councillor DeRusse?
No.
Conseilleur Plante?
Oui.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Councillor Troster?
Yes.
Councillor Kits?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor DeRouche?
No.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor Curry?
Yes.
Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
Councillor Carr?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
No.
Councillor Luloff? Councillor Brown?
No.
Councillor Kelly?
No.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor Low? Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Divine?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley? Mayor Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Fifteen yeas, eight nays?
Okay, thank you. The replacement motion is carried. Thank you again, everyone, for the discussion on that. Moving on to item sixteen point three, which is a motion introduced at the previous council meeting by councillor Carr on midterm governance, committee and board workload workload support. I believe there is a revised motion, councillor Carr? There's a revised motion, yes?
Sorry, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Did you want me to read the motion out or just speak to it? Given the revisions?
You can just, does it need to be read out? You could just speak to it.
Perhaps I'll just read the the clauses at the end, if that helps.
Sure. Do you want to read just the last part again?
No, that's good. I'll read it, read it, and then I'll speak to it if that's okay. Therefore be it resolved that city council direct the city clerk to include the following matters relating to standing committee and board governance as part of the twenty twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six midterm governance review process. A review of additional support provided to leadership roles such as committee and board chairs and ward position specific appointments as described in this motion, including but not limited to reviewing current levels and allocation of funding and reviewing proposed approaches that would provide for committee vice chairs in or ward position specific appointments to receive additional support and recognition of increased workload, and that members of council continue to be consulted regarding their committee and board workload, and that amendments to committee membership and or potential reduction in the size of committees be considered should members raise workload concerns. Yeah, so I'll just speak to this quickly. At the time that I was appointed to eight committees and boards at the beginning of my term, I wasn't fully aware that boards came with, for example, all the subcommittees that they come with. I was and continued to be absolutely honored that I was selected for the boards and committees that I was as somebody who cares passionately about social justice, homelessness issues, the opioid crisis, to be on the Ottawa Public Health Board, Ottawa Police Services Board, Ottawa Community Housing Board, Community Services Community, for example, is is a tremendous honor and and something that I I definitely feel fulfilled about. And when I was appointed to all of those committees, I remember speaking to my colleagues, in particular, councillor Plante and councillor Troster, that said, you have a big workload. And I, you know, I remember saying to them, yeah, but I don't have the automatic board appointments that you guys do with respect to the B I A appointments. I think one of you gets five automatic board appointments.
I think um, one of you gets five automatic board appointments, the other one gets three automatic board appointments outside of this process. And I, I certainly don't have the, for example, the, the bylaw uh, statistics that come out of those two wards. So as time has gone on and I um, uh, I, I looked at and begun to wonder if, um, I certainly respect that we, we had a motion um, that was performed, I think it was from councillor Kavanaugh last term, that fifty percent of uh, board, board and commission positions should be considered to have gender equity on them. Um, with nine women, it can make it uh, very difficult. Uh, we, we've got a bit of an imbalance sometimes, I think, in, in, in the fact that we've mandated work for women to do. And uh, I, you know, looking at in terms of the budget that we are assigned, um, is uh, it, it, it can be significant when you don't have, that the additional supports are only offered to board chairs in terms of budgets. They're not offered um, for the depth and breadth of assignments um, and other ward specific factors. So all I'm asking for is that during midterm governance, that we perhaps take a look at some of these um, how we, we give compensation and what we deem to be um, the extra workload. I think that maybe it's not just being a chair that's important, but um, in terms of the depth and breadth of responsibilities, it may be a little bit more ward specific or that uh, maybe in terms of um, board and commission appointments that uh, while we're looking at the compensation motion that was put forward previously by councillors Brown and Troster, that we also consider these factors as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Carr. Uh, is the motion carried? Thank you. Uh, next is a motion from uh, councillor Hubley on the Municipal Elections Act review. Um, and I understand there's a revision to this as well, councillor Hubley?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, I will just go to the therefore be it resolved. That uh, city council requests that the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing review the Municipal Elections Act to provide clarity on regarding who is responsible for the enforcement of contraventions of the third-party advertising provisions. B, consider the adjudication and investigation of complaints made during the uh, campaign period. C, review spending limits for third-party advertisers. D, remove the ability for corporations and unions to donate to the third-party advertising campaigns. And E, permit the city to develop tools to enhance the provision that candidates not direct or otherwise cooperate with third-party advertisers. Two, in the absence of an enforcement network, uh, framework, add an opt-out provision allowing municipalities to determine if third-party advertising is to be prevented, uh, permitted in their municipal elections. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I need to speak to that. I think it, it, it says the intent. I think everybody around the table knows what we're trying to protect ourselves against in the future.
Thank you, councillor Hubley. Counselor Brockington?
Thanks, Mayor. Just um, a quick point, since this is a, a letter-writing campaign and I know uh, where you stand on, on those types of campaigns. Um, I think it's important, if, if I was in the ministry and I received basically a letter that said Ottawa council passed this motion, we need to better articulate what the problems or challenges that may exist that I think this motion is trying to address. So when it talks about spending limits or who can be engaged, what exactly are the issues that council wants to see addressed? And so if this motion is passed and if a copy of the motion is provided, I'm suggesting the letter go into detail and try and provide some examples that exist that uh, is the genesis for this motion, because I don't think the motion goes into those details. A motion isn't the place where you put all these details in, but I think that would be beneficial for the ministry to receive. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, there won't be a letter. It's just sharing the fact of the motion that will uh, that will occur. Um, okay, councillor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I get that we need to look at the subject overall, that probably municipalities across Ontario are saying the same thing. I'm almost certain they are. Uh, but I, I, I would like to have a separate vote on, on number two, uh, because I don't feel that we should be um, going our own way. I think that we should be consistent with other municipalities. So I'd like that, make that a separate vote. Thank you.
Okay. Um, do you want to, do you want people to just express dissent on that? If, if, is that easier rather than having a full vote on it? Are you okay with that? Okay. Uh, so is the motion carried? And does anyone who wants to dissent on the entire motion? Does anybody want to dissent on the entire motion? No? Does anybody want to dissent on, on item two? So councillor Kavanaugh?
I'm. I'd like.
Menard, councillor Troster?
Divine. Councillor Divine.
Okay, you got everyone? Thank you. Item sixteen point five is a motion from Conseil Plante, uh, and I understand this also is a revised motion. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, I'll, it's just the therefore be resolved. So I'll read that. It says therefore be, and uh, again, I do want to thank um, Clara for all your help in both drafting this and coming up with the therefore be it resolved. I really appreciate it. We all know that people deserve housing, they deserve a door, they deserve dignity and shelters do not provide that. So therefore be resolved that staff um, be directed to analyze the structural factors preventing emergency shelter stays from achieving less than thirty days and report back to council before the long-range financial plan is tabled that informs the latter and ultimately informs budget twenty twenty-four. Merci beaucoup.
Um, can I just ask um, if staff, if this is already happening? Is this already something we're doing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this data we collect already and we don't have any objection to the motion as it's presented.
Okay. But it is something we are already doing. Okay. Is the motion carried? Okay, item sixteen point six, uh, again Conseil Plante?
Uh, is that not the same one?
There's, there were two different motions, were there not?
They look the same. Average wait times and reduce shelter wait times.
Okay. So the second one is how to reduce shelter stay times to thirty days.
Yeah, that's what we just.
Okay. The previous one was average wait times. So I, there's two motions on the agenda.
Okay. I'll ask staff to, to put the agenda back on the screen, item sixteen point six. Oh, I see, I see. I'll read the therefore be resolved.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so um, I'm just going to read the sixteen point five and then I'm going to reread sixteen point six. Is that okay?
So did we effectively just vote on sixteen point six and?
Yes.
And?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we had put sixteen point five on the screen, but the councillor did read sixteen point six.
Okay. So let's, let's do, read sixteen point five then, please.
Yep. Sorry, it's just. Okay, um, therefore be resolved, um, whereas staff? Did I? No, okay. Therefore.
Counselor Divine, if you could mute your microphone, please?
Whereas council has approved its terms of council priorities, where its first strategic priority as a city that has affordable housing is more livable for all. And whereas the third strategic objective in the approved terms of council priority speaks about the need to increase investments in affordable housing to create a clear path for ending chronic homelessness, homelessness. And whereas part of that strategic objective will be to reduce our reliance on shelters and providing more supportive housing in order to end chronic homelessness. Whereas staff recognize that many people resort to living unsheltered due to feeling unsafe and sheltered among other reasons, unsafe in shelters among other reasons. Therefore be it resolved that staff provide this information to council on the structural factors preventing emergency shelter stays from achieving less than thirty days prior to the long-range financial plan is tabled that informs the latter and ultimately informs budget twenty twenty-four.
Okay, is, again, is that something that we're already doing?
Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, y- yes, and it, staff were under the impression, pardon me, that the two motions were now one motion. And the one that was previously adopted is the motion that speaks to, I believe, all of what the councillor is intending to achieve.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So do, do you want to withdraw sixteen point six then and just approve sixteen point five?
Yep, and Clara, I'll, I'll just make sure that we send that to you after all together and if, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so are we comfortable with having carried sixteen point five as it's written? Okay. All right. Motion's requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Uh, we have a few related to road closures, so uh, councillor Troster, please.
This is just to close the street for the Pride Festival that I hope you'll come to.
Yeah, sorry, I should be saying first before you read the motion.
Sorry.
Yeah.
You can.
On suspension of the rules, is that carried?
Carried.
Go ahead, councillor Troster.
Uh, I'll read it really quickly. Whereas capital pride is being celebrated in Ottawa from August nineteenth until August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Whereas capital pride will be holding a street festival on Bank Street, you should come. Between Slater Street and Waverley Street, Somerset Street between O'Connor Street and Bank Street and Gloucester Street between Bank Street and O'Connor Street, beginning on the twenty-fifth of August as part of the festivities and whereas capital pride has requested to close Bank Street between Slater and Waverley Street, Somerset and O'Connor and Bank and Gloucester Street between Bank and O'Connor Street at three P M to begin setup and preparations for the street festival that you should definitely come to. And whereas the City of Ottawa's special events on city streets by law prohibits road closures before six P M Monday to Friday. And therefore be it resolved that council approved the full road closures of Bank Street between Slater Street and Waverley Street, Somerset Street between O'Connor and Bank Street, Gloucester Street between Bank Street and O'Connor Street, providing it meets the requirements, conditions and approval of the special events advisory team.
Motion carried?
Happy Pride!
Thank you, councillor Troster. Just for the record, I understand councillor Divine intended to dissent on the entire Hubley motion, uh, so we'll just amend the record to show that.
Thank you.
Uh, we also have a motion from councillor Kelly on a road closure as well. So we have one downtown and one rural road closure to consider. Go ahead. Uh, sorry, on suspension of the rules, is that carried?
Carried, carried. Whereas the Carp Village Business Improvement Association is holding a harvest dinner in the village on September ninth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the Carp Village BIA will use this event as an opportunity to showcase local businesses and products. And whereas the village, Carp Village BIA has requested to close Carp Road between Wanita Avenue and Donald B Monroe Drive at three P M on September seventh, twenty twenty-three to begin setup and preparations for the harvest dinner. And whereas the City of Ottawa's special events on city streets by law prohibits road closures before six P M Monday to Friday. Therefore be it resolved that council approved the full road closures of Carp Road between Wanita Avenue and Donald B Monroe Drive, providing it meets the requirements, conditions and approval of traffic services.
Councillor Leeper? Should people attend the Harvest Festival?
I, I would love to have all of you, but this event sold out in about an hour. Yeah.
Missed your chance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is that carried? Next, we have a motion from councillor Tierney, seconded by me on the Federation of Canadian Municipalities on suspension of the rules. Is that carried? Councillor Tierney?
Great, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm just going to speak to it uh, briefly. Uh, back in twenty eighteen, just history lesson, uh, we went over a population of a million, so we got a designated seat. Uh, since I've been elected, uh, I had the privilege of being elected to table officer. Uh, now leaves the vacancy open, so therefore be it resolved that council appoint Lane Johnson as the City of Ottawa's representative to the FCM Board of Directors for the period starting August twenty twenty-three and ending August twenty twenty-four. And be a further resolve that the City of Ottawa assumes all costs associated with the council-appointed representatives uh, attending FCM's Board of Directors meeting uh, and funded from the council administrative budget. So now we have two people from the City of Ottawa on FCM, so congratulations.
Is the motion carried? Thank you. Uh, we also have a motion regarding appointing two people to be uh, the council co-leasons for older adults. So on suspension of the rules, is that carried? Councillor Gower?
Okay, uh, therefore be it resolved that council appoint the following members of council as the council liaison representatives for older adults, uh, councillor Kavanaugh and councillor Hubley.
Is that carried? Thank you. Thank you both for stepping up into that role. Notices of motion. Councillor Carr has a motion seconded by councillor Brown. Councillor Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas in keeping with the city's commitment to accountability and transparency, the overarching principle of the routine disclosure and active dissemination policy is to advance the view that information held by the City of Ottawa should be made available to the public and any exceptions to this principle should be limited and specific. And whereas on December eighth, twenty ten, city council approved the twenty-ten to twenty-fourteen governance review report and established the practice of disclosing the individual office expenses for members of city council, including business-related travel on the city's website in the spirit of accountability and transparency. And whereas the senior leadership team, being the general manager and the city manager, similarly discloses their office expenses, including business-related travel on the city website, but business-related travel for the extended senior leadership team, which includes managers and directors, is not proactively disclosed. And whereas total travel expenses for the current extended senior leadership team totaled sixty-three thousand one hundred and eleven dollars in twenty twenty-two, yet disclosures relating to travel for the current senior leadership teams was fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy, representing twenty-two point four five percent of the travel for the extended senior leadership team. And whereas the City of Toronto discloses expenses related to business travel for senior staff positions at the division head and director levels, therefore be it resolved that effective January first, twenty twenty-four, all business-related travel for the city's extended senior leadership team be disclosed on Ottawa.ca on a quarterly basis.
Thank you, councillor Carr. Another notice of motion uh, from Conseil Plante on uh, uh, the Franco-Ontarian flag.
Oui, merci beaucoup. Um, attendu que Vanier est un bastion de francophonie à Ottawa. Attendu que Vanier est un quartier historique.
Since Vanier is a bastion of francophonie in Ottawa and the francophone neighborhood in Ottawa, it's what, French is one of the two official language of the country. And since its inauguration on twenty-fifth of September, twenty nineteen, le carré francophone de Franconomie is a carrefour. We really want to celebrate francophonie here. As of since the twenty eighteen, and as part of the annual festivity of September twenty-fifth, jour des francontariens, francontariennes, the flag should be permanently displayed on a temporary flagpole located near le carré de la francophonie de Vanier, pending the erection of the permanent flagpole. On the twenty-fourth of June, twenty twenty-three, we're celebrating language and traditions. The flag was raised for the first time on the new permanent flagpole erected at the carré de la francophonie. And as part of the City of Ottawa Montreal Road Revitalization Project, we're supporting this initiative, therefore be it resolved that the council declared le carré de la francophonie de Vanier flagpole to be the very first official flagpole exclusively and permanently displaying the francontarian flag on the Montreal Road in the heart of Vanier. Once more, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Go ahead.
Um, and I also, before I begin, I just want to thank um, councillor King for seconding this motion. We've had some discussions about what is a child-friendly city and how we can make our city a great place for kids to grow up in. Whereas all City of Ottawa staff reports prepared by committee and council consideration follow the corporate standard council and committee report template. And whereas the standard council and committee report templates includes various implications sections that are meant to provide a high-level summary of how the report recommendations will affect a particular area of focus or how the recommendations comply with relevant standards, policies and legislations. And these implication sections are completed by the report author, in some cases with the assistance of subject matter experts and prescribed staff. And whereas the current standard council and committee report template includes certain mandatory implication sections that must be completed for all reports, financial implications, legal implications, as well as various mandatory, if applicable, implication sections, accessibility impacts, asset management implications, climate implications, delegation of authority implications, economic implications, environmental implications, indigenous gender and equity implications, risk management implications, rural implications and technology. Whereas although the city, although many city services and programs have a direct impact on children and youth, the standard council and committee report template does not include an implication section that summarizes the effects of report recommendations on this important cohort such as recreation, public transit and childcare. Whereas the standard council and committee template is traditionally reviewed as part of city's regular governance review process. Therefore be resolved that city council direct staff to bring forward for council's consideration as part of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-six midterm governance review process, a proposal that children and youth implication section be included in the standard council and committee report template.
Thank you. Uh, and uh, next a notice, notice motion on councillor's statements. See you again.
Yep. Um, and again, I want to thank um, councillor DeRush. We had a- Yep, and again, I want to thank councillor De Rush, we had a quick conversation about this. As I was browsing the minutes of other city councils for the opioid situation, in my ward, I noticed that they allowed councillors to make public statements, you know, congratulating someone in their ward. Congratulating a team, so this is in that spirit. Whereas the Ontario Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing publication titled The Ontario Municipal Councillor's Guide recognizes that councillors have three main roles to play as in a city. A representative, a policymaker and a steward. Whereas many democratic bodies allow their members to make statements to recognize significant events in the constituency they represent. Such as the passing of a significant member of the community, success of a local sports team, the contribution of a volunteer organization. As a standard practice, whereas the proceedings of city council are governed by the Procedure Bylaw number twenty twenty-two four ten. And these rules of procedure do not currently contemplate councillor statements such as statements only occur on an ad hoc basis by way of motion or with consent of the mayor. And whereas providing all councillors with a regular opportunity to make such statements would facilitate their representative role as outlined in the above-noted ministry guide. Whereas in keeping with tradition, city council is expected to review and make adjustments to its government practices in twenty twenty-four through the midterm governance review. Therefore be it resolved that city council direct the city clerk to undertake a jurisdictional scan of the practice of councillor statements, consult with members of council and report back on findings. Of any associated recommendations as part of twenty twenty-two, twenty-six midterm governance review.
Thank you, and finally on disclosure of non-competitive contracts, go ahead.
Last one, I swear. Thanks again to councillor Brown who seconded this motion, and we've had also conversations about this. Whereas the City of Ottawa's Procurement Bylaw number two thousand fifty as amended provides a non-competitive contracts commonly known as sole-source contracts to be awarded to certain circumstances and. Whereas with respect to the reporting to council of non-competitive contracts, subsection thirty-nine of the procurement bylaw provides that the chief procurement officer. Shall submit to council an information report semi-annually containing the details relevant to the exercise of delegated authority for all contracts awarded by directors exceeding. Twenty-five thousand and supply services shall certify in the report that the award are in compliance with the procurement bylaw. And whereas the current reporting disclosure threshold that exceeds twenty-five thousand. Does not provide for disclosure of non-competitive contracts valued at twenty-five thousand or less, resulting in a lack of transparency regarding these sole-source contracts. And whereas enhanced reporting to council of non-competitive contracts valued at twenty-five thousand or less would align. With overarching principle in the routine disclosure and active dissemination policy, which is to advance the view that information held by the city should be made available to the public. And any exception to this principle should be limited and specific. And whereas the City of Toronto Purchasing and Materials Management Division Routine Disclosure Plan dated November twenty-third, twenty twenty. Provides for the online disclosure of relevant details regarding the non-competitive contracts issued, including the supplier name, contract amount, description, contract date, division name and rationale, except where the procurement is confidential. Therefore be it resolved that city council directs staff to bring forward in Q two, twenty twenty-four options for the public disclosure of non-competitive contracts valued at twenty-five thousand or less. Which are warden in accordance with the procurement bylaw, including the supplier name, contract amount, description, contract name and department name. And a huge thank you to Rick O'Connor, who I believe salivated when I told him about this motion for all of your help, not only with these, but every other motion I've ever put forward in the past. Merci beaucoup.
Merci conseil plant, motion to introduce bylaws, councillor Gower.
Que les règlements énumérés à l'ordre du jour sous le titre motion portant présentation de règlement trois lectures.
That the bylaw listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaw three reading be read and passed.
Que le règlement suivant soit lu et adopté, règlement radifiant les délibérations du Conseil du vingt-trois.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceeding of the council meeting of August twenty twenty-three. Be passed. Conseil Brockington?
Twenty twenty-three Planning and Housing Committee meeting. Planning Services staff indicated that they had one meeting with representatives from the N C C, A A F C and possibly other entities. To discuss the experimental farm. Would staff please provide council with a memo outlining the mandate or overall objectives of this group, including whether the discussion includes pending development around the perimeter of the farm? Shadow mitigation and ideal heights of buildings to reduce shadows and protect prime agricultural and research lands, thank you.
Thank you councillor Brockington, are there any other inquiries? Okay, just before we wrap up the meeting, I would be remiss if I did not mention that this is Rick O'Connor's last meeting as our city clerk. And I know, Rick, that you advised us that you did not want any fanfare for this last meeting. But this is the one time that I will ignore your advice. So I will now ask Wendy Stephenson to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and I have to say that it's pretty difficult to get something past the city clerk because we couldn't add this to the agenda. Today, but thank you for the opportunity to say a few remarks. And Rick, I'm gonna try and look at you while I speak. But I want to take the opportunity this morning or this afternoon to thank you. Our city clerk for your tremendous support and contributions to the City of Ottawa over the last thirty-five years, they've been just simply tremendous. You know, you've dedicated your entire career to municipal service. And you have been a true champion in terms of transparency, accountability and open government throughout your tenure. You never let go of that, and that is who you are. Here at the city, you've strengthened our accountability, our transparency. You've spearheaded the development of council's accountability framework, including the lobbyist registry. The employee code of conduct and routine and proactive disclosure policies. You know, as many of you are aware, Rick also served as the city's electoral officer. During the last four terms of council, where he and his team supported the transition of outgoing and incoming members of council. As well as council's adoption of new governance tools, such as the Procedure Bylaw and committee structures. Rick, you are widely regarded as an expert in municipal conflict of interest. You've made a positive impact off over the entire province of Ontario. And I say that, and I probably say that it's more than the province of Ontario where you've made that impact. You are highly regarded by your colleagues across the province. Everybody who I run into. Who knows you tells me how fabulous you are and what you have done. For that community of clerks across the province, and they're so appreciative of having met you, having known you and having worked with you. You have had an incredibly successful career. You've made a lasting impact here at the City of Ottawa. And it's going to benefit this organization for years to come. I know you're going to be missed by your team. Your exceptional leadership, your candor, your in-depth knowledge, your mentorship. And I know when I speak for the entire senior leadership team, we are going to miss you immensely. Your wise counsel, your steadfast guidance, your mentoring, your coaching, your expert advice and of course. Your witty sense of humor. So on behalf of the organization, thank you for your dedication to the City of Ottawa. And for your tremendous contributions to the entire province of Ontario. We wish you well on your next chapter. We know it's exciting and it's very well deserved, thank you so much.
Rick, would you like to say something?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Come on, say something.
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, another time perhaps, Rick, thank you. Merci beaucoup, okay, motion to adjourn, councillor Gower.
That the proceedings of the City of Council Meeting of August twenty twenty-three be adjourned.
Thank you everyone, merci beaucoup.
Good afternoon. Bonjour à tous. My name is Kendra Tittle and I will be your moderator. Je m'appelle Kendra Tittle et je serai la maîtresse de ce point de presse. I will now invite each agency in alphabetical order to ask their questions. You may ask one question with a follow-up. Par ordre alphabétique, j'invite maintenant chaque organisme à poser une question et une question de suivi. Please note that due to a technical issue with the microphone for today's availability, I will be repeating each reporter's question so that those following along on YouTube may hear the question being asked. We'll now start with, nous allons commencer par Arthur Whitecrummy at CBC Ottawa. Just to repeat, with the departure of the previous city manager, why did council make the decision, this current decision? And how did the LRT overshadow the decision?
We chose the absolute best candidate for the job. We conducted an exhaustive search that lasted many months and it was an international search. We interviewed candidates from three different countries. And we chose the person who's the absolute best person for the job. And on your second question, I would say that increasing trust and accountability and transparency is an enormous priority for me. And I think you've seen evidence of that already as we've followed the recommendations of the public inquiry with regard to the light rail system. We've been much more transparent with daily news briefings when the system wasn't running. And I know that it's a priority for Wendy as well. And we spoke about it during the interview process about the need to restore trust in city services, including light rail. And I know that's a commitment that Wendy is making. And I believe that we will increase trust through more transparency and by delivering more reliable services to the people of Ottawa. And I know Wendy shares that objective.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. I'll echo the mayor's comments in terms of when I went through the process, I talked about how important it was to restore trust, not only with our residents but also with council as well. And it's really a three-pronged approach for myself. It is about increased transparency. It's also about really good communication. And then, as the mayor said as well, around providing that service to our residents. And we're not going to be able to do it without doing all of those three things. That is the top priority for me and the organization in terms of achieving that. It's going to take time, there's no question. And we're taking steps towards that. And I hope that everybody sees we're taking those steps towards it.
I stand by what I've said all along and I'll emphasize that I am in favor of creating more green space in our city. I'm in favor of creating more complete streets like Churchill Avenue, where there is room for pedestrians, cyclists and motorists. I'm in favor of creating more space for cyclists and pedestrians. I'm really excited about the Chief William Commanda Bridge, which is an excellent example of infrastructure in our community, which does not take away from anything. It enhances space for cyclists and pedestrians. I've run across that bridge probably 15 times already in the time that it's been open. So I'm in favor of all these spaces. I think there has unfortunately become a bit of a, you know, a cars versus bicycle element to this discussion. It's not about that at all. I'm in favor of creating space for cyclists. The discussion is about a two-kilometer stretch of road. The discussion is about where is the best place to create more space for cyclists. Once upon a time, you know, maybe five, six years ago, I worked in the south end of the city and I would ride my bike from my home in West Wellington to the south end of the city. And I would ride my bike along Queen Elizabeth Driveway. And sometimes I would use the pathway, but mostly I would use the road and I would share the road with cars. And cars would pass by me comfortably and there was never any incident. And I would travel on Queen Elizabeth Driveway many, many days during the summer. And there was no issue. And there was room for everyone. There was room for cars, there was room for cyclists, there was room for pedestrians. On that particular two-kilometer stretch between Pretoria Bridge and Fifth Avenue, it's one of the only routes through that area. So it's very problematic if it's closed, particularly during peak times. I come back to the fact that the NCC and I agree that sometimes the road should be open to everyone. Motorists, cyclists, pedestrians. Sometimes the road should be closed to vehicles. I agree that on weekends, maybe in the evenings, on holidays, I got no problem with it being closed. All we disagree about is the exact schedule. I happen to think during peak times like rush hour and when there's major events at Lansdowne or in the Glebe, it should be closed to vehicles. They think it should be open. So this is not a big difference of opinion. It's about a very specific stretch of road. And so in terms of the data collection, I stand by the city of Ottawa's data, which was collected effectively. And I would ask the NCC why there has not been more cooperation on this. The NCC approached us initially and asked our opinion about closing the road. We advised that we thought it would be problematic for traffic in the Glebe. And it has been. And they went ahead and closed it anyway. And that's part of what's disappointing for me. I respect the NCC. I sit in on their board meetings. I have a collaborative relationship with them on many other files. But in this case, they chose to go in a different direction without cooperating with us. And I have heard from many, many people in the Glebe. This is not an issue just for people who are traveling through that area, coming from other parts of the city. Many people in the Glebe are very frustrated about the level of traffic on their residential roads now because Queen Elizabeth driveway is closed during rush hour.
Thank you. We'll now go to Jackie Perez.
Just kidding.
CBC Ottawa.
We work with the national, oh sorry, do you want to repeat that?
For those following along on YouTube, Jackie's question was, what is the current relationship with NCC?
Yeah. We work with the NCC on hundreds and hundreds of different things. City staff and NCC staff work on issues every single day. There's probably somebody on the phone right now from the city of Ottawa talking to somebody at the NCC. That probably happens every day. The only time it makes news is when we don't agree on something. So that may create the appearance that there's a lot of conflict, but there are many meetings that take place that you never hear about, where we're collaborating on things, even at the political level, where we're working towards solutions and where we share objectives. And even where sometimes we may have a difference of opinion and we work it out. So we just happen to be hearing about this one because we have a disagreement over one specific two-kilometer stretch of road. Not about the NCC's cycling program in general or recreational program, not about whether we want more active transportation in our city, just about that two-kilometer stretch of road.
So just to repeat that, Jackie's question is about the LRT and she's wondering what the capacity is to handle the current loads.
Especially in September, yeah. So we're monitoring this very closely. And I would start by saying I think that that's a question that OC Transport would be better positioned to answer than me, although I'm following up with them regularly to understand what the plans are. But my understanding from OC Transport is that they're monitoring it regularly and they will make sure that everything is in place to handle increased capacity in September when more people are moving around, including students. They're keeping an eye on the situation and whatever needs to be done to support increased volume in September, they will look at.
Thank you. Right. So we're going to Julie Anne's question. He is wondering about the hiring of the city manager and how the bilingual policy plays into that.
I'm not quite sure, but the decision about the city general manager was a decision made by the council. We do not need an exemption. It's like when a manager hires someone that is not bilingual. The manager must talk to the city council. And city council must allow for temporary exemption. This was a decision of the city council. And we looked into that. I would say yes. It's a process. It's only the beginning of that process. It's very early on right now. I think that in the near future, we will be able to ensure that the program reaches its objectives and principles. We don't want to tax people. It's not for a very specific reason. It's mostly a program that imposes a tax. But this was not the objective. If we can improve this program, we'll have to do it.
Asking about the vacant unit tax and what we are doing to improve the process for property owners. I don't know if Cyril has anything to add? Okay, thank you. Can we add anything?
Yeah, sure. I think we just, the program is new and the program has a specific purpose. And it's something that's been tried in other communities and seems to have been effective. So I'm prepared to give it more time and see how it works. We want to make sure that we are not applying the tax in places where it should not be applied. And anywhere there's an example of that, city staff are prepared to look at it. The intention is to make sure that vacant units are being used. It's easier to fill a vacant unit than to build another home. So the objective of the program is to accomplish that. And wherever possible, we will make sure that the tax is being applied where it's appropriate. And if it's being applied somewhere else, we'll address it.
Thank you, merci. The question is on vacant unit tax and
C'est encore sur l'ILV? Et qu'allons-nous faire avec les plaintes? We are listening to the resident. I've received some emails. The city of Ottawa personnel will try to solve the different issues. The issue started some months ago. I think we're pretty early in the process right now. It's a way to improve our program. It is very important to mention that we succeeded a little bit better than the other cities with their own programs. We had 99.1% participation. This is better than the declaration received from residents in Vancouver and Toronto. It's very easy to use. Senior citizens are able to fill the form. It's a simple form. Yes, there are some concerns, but I would say the majority of residents were not worried about this new tax. I think it is important to find a solution for every issue raised and to improve the program.
We are listening to those concerns and I think it's important that we understand that all of our options are open for the future in terms of how this is applied and how we change it in the future. We just need more time to understand the data, to understand those concerns from residents. I think it is important to underline that the vast majority of Ottawa residents have not expressed concerns. 99.1% of residents did the declaration. That's a higher rate than in Toronto or Vancouver. So by and large, this program has been adopted by the vast majority of Ottawa residents fairly seamlessly. I understand the concerns that people have raised and we're looking at those one by one. We want to make sure the tax is not being applied where it should not be applied. And we'll look at those, listen to concerns and we'll go through another cycle and then come back and review where we are with complete data with a full understanding of what's happening and make decisions accordingly.
The question is on affordable housing. And what are the next steps for the city?
Okay, and I finally waited for Kendra to repeat the question. Hello.
Nobody said that VUT is the end solution. We have to provide more than one solution for the housing crunch. And we're acting. This is an evergreen discussion, not only for municipal government, but also for the other levels of government. We're expecting funds from the federal government as well as for the provincial government. This is needed. We're working hand in hand with the other level of governments. We have to do a lot to be able to build more affordable units. Of course. We have some estimates. We think it will be about $10 million. This will be targeting affordable units and will allow us to reach our objectives. It's a large sum. But that's not the only solution for the house crunch.
Le point de presse d'aujourd'hui. Thank you, merci.